We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here today. Welcome to the McDowell County Board of Commissioners' regular monthly session. Today is September the 11th, 2023. And we will move into our meeting with, first of all, with a prayer and pledge. And we'll ask Commissioner Green if he will to lead us in our prayer. And then we have a special guest with us tonight, Mr. Gage Hunt. He is out of Troop 369, Boy Scouts, and he is here to get his communication badge tonight. So we're going to let him do our pledge tonight. But we'll start off with a prayer, and then we'll have Gage to come up here to the podium, if he will, and we'll do the pledge.
Our Father, we come to you this evening, honorable, but we would be proud to carry on the work of this county. Father, we pray that you would bless our efforts. We thank you for everything that you've done for us. We pray, Father, thanking you most of all for forgiveness of sin. We pray that you bless each one who's come this way, help us to make decisions that will benefit everybody in this county, Father, in the best way that we know how. Jesus Christ, amen.
Gage, if you will. Get him up there. You can stand right there for a little talk. You will do the pledge?
Attention, salute, pledge, what?
Pledge, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much we approve the minutes.
Chairman, very much we approve the minutes as presented.
Can I also ask that you please close session minutes.
With the addition of a closed session at the end of the meeting.
Second, all in favor of the aye? Give your approval of the agenda tonight.
Second, with a closed session at the end of the meeting for personnel matter.
Second on that, then, all in favor of that say aye? Okay. But I'd like to just a quick moment to welcome our new person to the board, Ms. Charity Coates. So we're glad to have her on board with us today, and we hope all of you will give her a warm welcome. And we're looking forward to working with her in all the good things to come as she has become a part of our board. So we welcome you, Charity, and glad to have you. Anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. All right. Moving along to our appointments. Under item A, the first thing on the appointment list is NCAA youth voice participant. And we've got Mr. Chad Ray here today. So Chad, you have the floor, my friend.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to thank you for having us. I want to introduce Ms. Gracie Davis. Gracie lives here in McDowell County. She's one of our 4-H members. She's also very active in FFA. She's a freshman at the high school, and she's a member of our shooting sport program, our beekeeper program, our livestock program. She's one of these that likes to be involved in everything. Kids today, it's hard to get them started, get them doing stuff, but Gracie's a great example of the kids and all the hard work they're doing out there. But she had the opportunity last month, well, further weeks ago now, to attend the County Commission Association meeting in Rodley. 4-H has partnered with them the last probably 10, 12 years now to have a youth voice, youth representation, meet with commissioners, and so she got to spend a couple of days with you guys down there. And part of that is she comes back and reports to you, talks to you about kind of what she learned, what she did. Tonight, she's just here to introduce herself, let y'all get to know her. I just want to brag on her for all the good work she's doing here in the county. Y'all have any questions for Ms. Gracie here?
What's your favorite thing to do? As you mentioned, beekeeping, livestock. Are you showing any kind of livestock, or are there animals? What are you out there, what's your best thing in 4-H?
In 4-H? I like the shooting sports the best.
Shooting sports?
I like shooting.
Okay. What's your favorite rifle to shoot with?
My favorite rifle? The .22.
Can you outshoot your dad?
I don't know about that.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
We heard some good things about you, Gracie, and when you went to the conference with these guys, I think Chris and Lynn were there, and so they enjoyed being with you at the conference. Anything you'd like to tell us about yourself now? Is to highlight your interest in 4-H too?
I think Chad said most of it, but I really like 4-H at the high school. We have Mr. Clark Adams and Ms. Stephanie Morris as our teachers there, and they teach a lot of things like animal science, horticulture, ag mechanics. There's some more stuff, too, I can't remember. And they do a lot for us. We're doing livestock competitions, a whole bunch of CDs with your career development experiences, and that helps us, like, to meet new people and start trying different things.
That thing was dropped for a while, and then it didn't re-.
It was for 28 years, 25 to 30 years, and it came back six or seven years ago. And it's really helped our program. We partner with FFA. We offer a lot of the same stuff, so we work with the same kids, and it's a great partnership, and it's opened the doors to a lot of new kids.
It was one of my favorite classes.
They have a middle school program now. They've added, it started as one teacher, they have two high school teachers now. And so it's really helped strengthen our program and get the kids involved in a whole lot more because there's so much for them to do between the both organizations. So we're lucky to have a great partnership with them.
I'll say that at the conference, Chris, Ashley, and myself were able to have breakfast with Gracie, and I was very impressed with the way that she could sit and talk and articulate what they do in FFA, 4-H. I've been impressed since being a commissioner with those two programs, with our young people, and how that it teaches them to communicate, and especially the way that they have to articulate when they're, as Mr. Walker mentioned, judging the animals. And so it's something that most adults can't do.
And Gracie, I didn't brag on her, too. She's very well-rounded, very well-spoken, but she has, I think this is her parents looking best, she was the most well-mannered kind. I would take her, like, our representative out there in 4-H for getting everywhere. So we're very proud of her and her potential and her accomplishments already.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say one thing, too. Chad's done, Chad, how long have you been our guy?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years. And Chad's done outstanding job with a lot. There's a lot of kids that have, or young people have been to your program, Chad, that are adults that are contributing every day here in McDowell County in various roles. And so thank you for your job. You've been faithful, and you really give it all to these young people, and it's evident they like hanging around you, and that's good.
We have fun. Yeah, we appreciate that. That was one of the things I was going to say, Chad, all the hard work you did, and kids love you, and we appreciate what you do. And Gracie, we're proud of you, and thank you for sharing your progress with us here tonight. We just act for you, and we wish you the very best in every day.
Hopefully, every year between now and your senior year, you'll be coming back, bragging on other accomplishments.
I'll try.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to show a picture?
Sure.
We need to get a picture with Gage as well.
What do you want to do with Gracie? So you don't want her to be yet.
You're right there with Chad. Chad, you're number two.
I'm Chad.
You're right there at Sam.
Thank you, Chad. Appreciate it. One more picture.
Gage, we need you out of there.
Yeah, appreciate it. Good night.
Thanks for coming in. Gracie's a player.
Okay, moving along to item B, is our transit funding public hearing. Very much we want to.
Second.
All in favor of the aye? Okay, we're going to welcome Mr. Gage. I'll go here after the podium. Gage, of course, yours.
Good afternoon. It's federal grant time again, so I'd like to present the figures and offer some explanation on those. Our admin amount this year is $192,0832. That's over $9,000 from last year, and that is based on passenger numbers. So we're on track to transport 300 more passengers this calendar year than last calendar year. So the thought process there, obviously, the more you transport, the more admin funding that they're going to allocate to us. That figure is contingent on 15% county match, which would be $28,925 this year. The second figure of $195,903 with a 10% county match is representing two new wheelchair vehicles. They're oldest two in the fleet, and I realize this doesn't sound old at this time, number 2019, but they've met their useful life, and by the time this funding transpires, they will definitely be ready to be replaced. Those amounts are pulled from the state contract, that's the state bid, and that does represent two transit vans, wheelchair vehicles, with a off-road. So that would total out to be county match for both of those grants of $48,515, which represents, as I said, 15% on admin rent, 10% on the capital rent, which is for two new vehicles.
That's pretty good, when you can spend $48,000, get $387,000 coming your way. Correct. And you're making the need of people and handicapped accessible, live vehicles, and that's great. So grateful.
You want them right or left, the broadest? Any comment? Any questions? Very much we approve the. All in favor of the aye?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. Motion second. Discussion. All in favor of the aye? Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I would like to give you a very brief update on the, of course, M-E-D grant, which is mobility for everyone everywhere. You've heard me talk about this before. Now, this is federal grant with no county match, but of course, the wheels are turning very slowly on this. We were hoping it would be amended already, and now they're giving us a January start date. However, they have dramatically increased the funding that they were proposing to us, actually almost doubled it. So how this will translate to what we're doing here, it's a technology-driven service, basically. You pick up your smartphone, and you put in you want to go to Walmart from 2:00 to 3:00. You pay your fare over the system. It sends it to a driver. We will have a separate van, loaded separately, and a separate driver to do these runs. It's something I'm excited about. I think it will go very well. They're doing something similar in Mitchell, and it's just been beyond their wildest dreams.
This is purely on demand, right?
Yes.
No scheduling, it's through the app?
Right. We've set up the parameters on the app of how we want that to look, so, you know, you won't be able to order a van at 9:00 p.m., but the parameter is set up, the area that we'll cover will be set up. So it'll be something very exciting. We talked about it quite a bit in our last Transit Board meeting. We decided on the name, the McDowell Connector. So I think it's something that will be a major plus to the citizens of the county, that will be able to just have a step up, something different than what we're used to, in order to get where they're going in a quicker way. So we've really done all we can do on that area, and we're just waiting on the money. So we will definitely keep the board informed as that transpires, but it's coming down the pipe. We're very excited about that. Any questions about that?
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
You know, it's like I was on there saying, we appreciate the direction you took, the transit system, since you took it over, and we're proud of where it's at and what you're doing with it. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Chairman, I do want to add, too, that I look forward to future discussions on how the transit system can be self-sufficient, self-funding moving forward on the fare side there.
Okay, thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, item C, is the fire and rescue contracts, and we've got Mr. Green Keller here with us, so we will forward your.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Commissioners. If you recall, we were here last meeting, our regular meeting, in August, where we presented for the first reading the fire rescue proposed contracts. These are proposed contracts for all of the fire departments outside of Marion area, as that contract was renegotiated in 2021. And the board tasked Deputy Director Presley and itself of looking at the other contracts, including the rescue squad, back in the spring. What you have before you is the proposed final contract. Since our last meeting, Deputy Director Presley and I have met either individually or together with the fire chiefs across the county, and have had sit-down one-on-one discussions with them to review the contract, all the proposed changes. And we had very positive feedback, but we actually had added some additional language that, and changed some terminology that needed to be changed, just to be updated, some of the prior contracts that were from 2002 to 2004, and we also had a contract from the audience that needed to be updated. Same goes for the rescue chief. We had a good conversation with Chief Gentry, and they are in favor of these contracts being submitted for final reading. The plan, if approved tonight, would be to take these contracts to the Fire Commission meeting on Thursday and present them as a funnel drive to the fire chiefs at that.
Just a quick question. We didn't amend the contracts at any time in writing, correct?
That is correct.
I make a motion to accept both as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
In discussion. We do want to, just make comment, but let's try to keep the funding for the rescue squad status quo now, and really keep the fire departments focused on fire, the rescue squad, focused on rescue squad, and the migration.
Does that need to be accepted, though?
If you could vote on the contracts, then maybe take that to the next.
Okay. One other discussion, a quick. So roster verification of the departments to make sure that if they're relying on personnel to retain, say, a heavy crash rating, so is that going to be an option to be reviewed, to look at, to make sure that departments have people who can respond that aren't just by name on the roster and are not able to respond?
Target specifically about rescue's contract?
Well, I would just put that in all of the report.
So the fire is essentially governed by department insurance, right? Or regular inspections, roster submissions annually. Rescue side is set up a little bit different, but in this new contract for rescue, it's on page three, I'm sorry, page two, section D. They are required to maintain applicable certifications and training for its members and employees on an annual basis. Rescue squads roster must have a minimum of eight active personnel for each service that is listed in section C, which set forth by the North Carolina Association of Rescue and EMS. In section C, those certifications are ambulance EMS provider, high-able rescue, heavy rescue provider, wilderness land service and rescue, water rescue, swift, I'm sorry, swift water rescue.
And that's good. Let's see, I saw that. Who verified that? Is that done by the departments?
So it would be up to the department to ensure that they are compliant with the contract. As far as the contract, that would be up to the county to enforce the contract if there's a breach.
So our fire marshal would have access to that, correct?
Our office would have access, just like on the medical side. We require them to submit a roster every quarter to verify medical providers, and then they also have to ensure that every active member on their roster sets before our medical director for annual competency testing on the medical side. So there's also a medical director contract that is overseeing rescue as well.
So we do have the mechanism currently in place to ensure that?
On the medical side, yes. On the rescue side, this contract here will further enforce or strengthen that language.
And one good thing about the contract, it stated that every department will run first responder medical cost to the.
So if you look at that fire contract and this language, we were very transparent when we met with these chiefs. All the original language that was unchanged was in black. All of the proposed changes were in red. If you look at, is section two correct? Yeah, section two, that language is unchanged. The fire department will provide, so long as capable, the additional emergency services as follows. Emergency medical first responder services, basic emergency rescue services, traffic control, structural firefighting, wildland firefighting, urban interface, storm damage removal for public roadways services. All of that language was unchanged for prior fire contracts.
Any other discussion?
If I could, can I just defer to him about the language, about it being, I want to make sure I cross-check that with the manager.
On the medical side?
Now, the contract, my interpretation is the contract can be amended in writing at any time if the parties agree. To Commissioner Ellis.
It was stated.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I was correct on that. That's my interpretation of it.
At any point, and if everyone terminated, require more notice, but modification, any modification we could do?
I just wanted to make sure I was.
I think Mr. Ellis had already addressed that.
Yeah, he just wanted to make sure we're all the same.
Any other? All in favor of the aye? Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Thank you.
Mr. Ellis brought up the item. Chairman, I would like to make a motion for the funding for the rescue squad to be for the rescue squad and keep the fire departments, as fire departments, to just keep this status quo for the rescue squad. It is not going, we don't want to amend and give some of the funding to rescue to something else. So we're going to keep that status quo of rescue squad.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion. All in favor of that say aye? Moving now to the own business, item A and no business, the water project update, which would be.
I'll get started, and I know at the end of this, maybe Mr. Abbott and I think Michael would be around for the discussion, just to give some updates on some water projects that we have underway. We have quite a few, again, primarily in the Nevo area where we have our primary system, our only system right now. Nevo Phase 1A and 1D, which is north of the school. 1A, the notice of proceed date was today, and so I doubt they've done much today, maybe some staging. 1D will, this proceed date of mid-October. And the contractor, the owner, has told me he will only make money if they move through it quickly, and so he intends to be done much quicker than the contract period, which is about six months for both. So that is what we like to hear, because we like people that need and want water to get sooner than later. And so with that in mind, hopefully for 1A, we might have completion in December. That's what we'll hope for, but they do have a long time for that. The Universal Water Sewer Project, this is primarily to serve the existing building for sewer for Universal. We're upgrading that sewer system in partnership with the City of Marion. We're also providing water to the, and sewer for the development sites we'll talk about in a second, Forza, and future businesses, hopefully, that are off-con strike. We have received the approved plans and specifications for the Hoppy Tom Hollow Water Line, so that will probably bid in the next month and a half, I would guess. We would probably have bids for your approval in the November meeting. Phase two, which is coming back close to Marion, is pretty much done with the design. We're down at the final short rose on that, and once we sign on to a few things, the staff level will send it to the state for permitting, and so that's probably about three months or so away from, I don't know, to bid itself. We have two products that have been awarded that are pretty much underway as far as design. The East End Project, which is towards the end of 126, around the Gulf Force area, that is under design right now. And then we have Appalachian Regional Commission grant that's been awarded to do two short extensions around exit, I mean, around existing water service. Before I move on, I did email you, we'd like to have things in the packet and get it, but have a contract come late. I emailed you, you have on your table an administration contract from Philadelphia Regional Commission for that grant that we would ask you to approve for $10,000. That agency would handle all of the bidding coordination, project administration, reimbursement reports, et cetera, and the funds to be paid out of the grant and a little bit of a loan.
What's the, what's the cost per name, grand sandwich out of 10?
Probably a half this county and half is federal.
Okay. Can I ask anything?
Our funds.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion it for you as presented.
We have a motion to second. We have any discussion. All in favor of the aye? You vote.
The last update, you have a letter to the. The last update, you have a letter to the superintendent about the potential extension of water to Westman Elementary. I feel like any day now we'll have an award notice for that ARC grant, $500,000, that will go towards the water line towards that school, and so I understand there will be a discussion of that project tonight's award meeting. The last item underwater, you have a memo from Mr. Abernathy, who is here, of course, in reference to Mr. McGlaughlin's development, who is also here for development on U.S. seventy East in Nivo. This is a project that Mr. McGlaughlin has been working on for several years to build very nice, affordable homes in that community to meet the need that exists, and as laid out in the proposal from Mr. Abernathy has been discussed, Mr. McGlaughlin is asking for essentially a partnership agreement, development agreement with the county to where for, in exchange for certain actions and activities he would undertake on his property, he's asked for the county to undertake an action specifically tapping and boring a six-inch line underneath U.S. seventy, to meet him at his property, to where he would undertake activity on his property, perhaps on an order, it would be understanding that there's performance metrics to be had and sort of thing. So give an overview, Mr. Abernathy, Mr. McGlaughlin, here.
I think, you know, I'm aware of the whole situation, and I'm very look forward to everybody else's.
Would like to ask a question of Mr. Abernathy. It's okay. With this being private person coming to us, what's the plan on addressing other businesses in helping address economic development as far as housing goes into county? Because I want to make sure we're fair. I do think this is a good opportunity to partner with individuals, but we also need to be fair, both to the county and to the individuals.
Thank you. Thank you. In ten seconds, you have a major housing problem in the state as well as in McDowell County. You've got a 99% rental rate, you have got no spec housing being built, except by a very few number of people like Mr. McGlaughlin is doing. Your economic development group has focused on housing. We are meeting, and if we're out of line, you know, you guys let us know, but we're meeting with developers and trying to encourage additional housing to be built, because it is an economic development issue. So what Mr. McGlaughlin is proposing to do, and you've got six homes being built in front of a county, in front of a county water line, what he's proposing to do is to pay for and construct the service to those homes, turn the system over and the customers over, and I think the only thing that the county would be asked to do is to put the line across the street. And so, to me, very easy to duplicate the number of, just, you know, any time a developer wants to construct. And we did this in the wildlife with Crescent Resources, where they installed lines and then turned it, turned it over to county for their, for their operation. It's really a good deal. You're probably getting more customers on this than you are on your, your other, your McGimsey and some of those larger, more expensive lines. And Mr. McGlaughlin has got other properties that he's looking, looking to do. You'll get it off the tax base, you'll get it off the customers, and it's, it's really a, quite a, quite a deal.
Our investment on this project right now would be in the neighborhood of what Mr. Blue?
As soon as so far, it's about 20 or 25,000.
I think it would be a fair investment for the possible return that could come back on the county.
I'd like to say just something, I'm not opposed to having out with this, but what I would like to see is the agreement laid out on paper before we actually take action. I'd like to see you come back with that, to see what your side is and what our side is. And, you know, I'd just like to see it on paper laid out before we do it.
That's, that's always a good, a good thing to ask for, to have, have something written. The, the issue is that he's got, you know, and I'm not saying anything really, except that we're under, he's under quite a time constraint. And, and all you're agreeing, you know, he's got homes that are built and wells scheduled, and once those homes go on wells, you'll, you'll not get the, get the customer back. He's, all you're doing is crossing the line on seventy and putting in a meter, and what he, what Wayne is doing is constructing the lines, turning them over, and guaranteeing that the, that the, that the homes will in fact connect to county water.
I'd like to say.
But that does need to be.
That's what I'd like to see, right?
I think it'd be fair in, in moving forward on my part of it, if, you know, when, when he has the, the lines installed, has a line installed at the development, at that point in time, you know, I'm good for us putting our line under the, under the idol.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve the partnership with contract being brought back to the board, outlining responsibilities of both parties, with the county attorney reviewing that contract, and we hope you're, it's going to be 30 homes, you say, Wayne, which is great, and it's going to be $700 million value, which they haven't been able to, or even be ready to help get back in service to the people, so, yeah, I'm good with the just contract being drawn up and brought back for everybody.
Sir.
Thank you. I got a question. When you vote to move forward and have a contract brought for review, what happens if you don't like that contract? You've already voted to move forward.
Well, I didn't make a motion.
Let me clarify that.
I understand, he didn't make my motion. I just made a statement that I am prepared to move forward. Then he came back and made a motion, or said that didn't pertain at all to what I said.
I'll clarify my motion, and now let's see that drafted and turn it back at the next meeting, when we meet mid-month. That way, consequently, you try houses, that's why you need to dig a well or to go on water lines.
That's next week, we can do something.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other questions?
There's still a vote.
We've got a, any other discussion?
So I'll, that's next week, so I'm fine with that, and.
I want to be clear on what we're voting on. Are we voting to have a contract brought back to the board for review, outlining responsibilities of both parties?
Yeah, we're not voting to do it another, we can wait another week.
I got you, I got you. No problem. Can I review the contract and we can?
Vote it over there.
Yes or no?
Yeah, vote it over there.
Thank you, guys.
I appreciate, like you said, we've got other properties we're going to be doing, and this will have to start us, because we've been even doing the same thing, I guess.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Next time you attend, it's on the lead is the capital update, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. And okay, we'll lean on the second one there, a lot of updates and maybe not a lot of action. So many of what we're doing capital-wise is perhaps tied in and related to delays on the state budgets. Sometimes we, there should be a state budget released, so we've been told. And I say that because perhaps there's hope and belief, maybe, that there may be potential state funding for some of these projects. If we find out at the end of the week, after it's all released and adopted and maybe even signed with the governor, that there are no funds, even if there are, it'll speed up and call seventy to make some decisions on several of these projects that have really just been pending for quite a while. Specifically, and to start off, the recreation center, I've never seen this, and Mr. Abernathy, who just left, I'm sure in his career never saw anything like this. We still have open bids that were opened, I believe in June, for this project, the recreation center. Again, 10.4 was the lowest bid, and we have about, right at $4 million available for construction. Decision will have to be made, but that's a big gap, obviously. And so until there was more certainty and clarity, it really didn't make sense to do anything with that. Architect understands what's going on, he's made the contractors aware, and they're all okay, just kind of hold that now. The services building, again, no action there, no update really, we're still waiting, we've got a drawing, we've got estimates, we're just waiting on animal shelter. Did get a question about this earlier, you had asked that some drawings be made for a new building. I haven't heard an update, I'm asked for one a couple of weeks ago, so I'll ask for another one there, as far as where things stand on cost, that's some things. There was a discussion I had with fundraiser, it was not my recommendation or request, someone approached us about doing that, said.
Someone out of county, or someone in the county's bracket at a fundraiser, it's not a county employee?
That's right.
I have a problem with them doing that, or they wanting anything from us, other than?
Other than a building, which is a big ask, but it would have to be something coordinated and not someone kind of doing it on their own, you know, if they're looking for some sort of expectation on the other side of that. The last item, maybe a little bit more to this one, the Garden Street parking lot, again, the EMS building that was there on South Garden Street has been gone for a month or two now. Foundation is still there, still see the footprint of the building. I did meet with the city manager and his public works director about two weeks ago, with our public service director, to just kind of do a once-over of the site and to really just get a grasp of how you would perhaps expand the existing parking lot that we have built with the city's participation and co-ownership. On our site, the EMS site, Mr. Rill and I talked about meeting with our engineer next week about what makes sense as far as removing that foundation. Probably makes sense to remove that, there's probably an in-ground fuel tank that is still in the ground from years ago, so that will have to be removed before you prepare the site for parking. We're getting that worth lined up and maybe leave the concrete slant there, maybe not, but at least get the old foundation out, the tank out, and then we'll have sort of a base level and resume conversations with the city. So no action on any of those items, but as I said, the start will get very close. Might be worth having a special meeting on this capital items, or maybe an October meeting, we might have a healthier discussion about it, so it's up to the end.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. Let's move along now to the broadband update.
Yes, sir. You had a great update, I thought, last month from Mr. Tank with Spectrum. He talked about the 4,000 households that would be served by McGrake and Ardo, grant awards out of the, and probably will lean on him to do more messaging from a corporate perspective of what they're doing. Anything they can do to fiddle that need, just like he did here, will continue to supplement that. A meeting later this week with the representative of the broadband office with NCDIT about cab funding. One of the reasons we go to conferences and workshops is to learn things, and got to meet this gentleman at that workshop, as mentioned earlier. He is very excited about the $900,000 that he budgeted towards broadband and wants to be here as soon as he can to help figure out a strategy on project development. And so, do we do one big project, do we do many small ones? As many households as we can reach is the idea, but he's going to help us figure out how to get there. So I have reached out and contacted Dow for some thoughts on some areas in the county planning staff that we're working on as well, so when we get to that point, it'll be somewhat soon, I'll say months, we hope to be back here getting full permissions applied, but very excited about this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. If you will, give us the Universal property update.
Yes, sir. Really good news there with Universal Property. Mr. Coates, who is here, is working on diligent lean on the deed work for the property, approximately 11 acres that you've agreed to be sold to Forza X1. That is the company that announced here a little over a year ago. That company is very excited to move on site and continue their finished grading and the construction, and the county is selling land, and so when it makes sense and when we can, we do like to return property to the tax rolls, and this would definitely be an area where that will happen. And so we hope to have this closed within the next couple of weeks, and then again, Forza will take over that site and proceed with construction.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion that we approve staff's request to the Department of Safety and Public Transport.
Sir, motion is second, discussion. All in favor of that, say aye? Again, let's move into new, new business now. My main new business is the request from all four, we're going to take care of that, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. It's all related to asks here. Several years ago, as we were going through properties, it was determined that it wasn't news to certain people, but it was to me that we owned a water tank in the county that we were assigned, and found out the history of that water tank. It was built in partnership with the town in the 60s to benefit Collins and Aitken, and also the town. Part of that tank at one point was used for fire suppression, support for Collins and Aitken, it's my understanding that no longer need it for such, but the town needs it for the critical water supply. The county had ownership and interest in it because when that plant was built, the water sewer improvements were paid for by bonds taken out by the county. Those bonds were paying off about 30 years ago, no longer a need for the county to own the water tank unless you want to own it. It's really no benefit to us. So there's two asks here. The town is wanting to do some somewhat immediate electrical upgrades, so there's an easement request from Duke Energy in here, so ask you to definitely approve that, if you have no desire to keep owning that water tank, we would ask that we work on the deed transfer to the county.
Mr. Chapman, I would approve the easement and transfer ownership of the tank to the city of Forza.
Sir. Motion second, discussion. All in favor of that, say aye? And we, we have no need in that, so.
And then too, they donated two model fields and a swimming pool to the county, so I think it's all fair.
Is it, I don't want to give Mr. Coates any more work, I think there's a lot, but is it okay, since it is our current asset, that we do the deed?
Absolutely, as far as I'm concerned.
Yep.
Do we need to vote on that?
I think we're okay.
All right, this, I believe is the property tax relief options, and Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. Under Reports and Communications, last month, there was a discussion about including, more discussion this month, about current property tax relief options for county taxpayers. Also based on, that discussion prepared a resolution related to that. Also based on that discussion, prepare a resolution related to that point. I didn't put dollars in there as far as you had a discussion at that point about the LRL exemption, making sure that couples were not penalized, for example. I didn't put that in there. I didn't put in the percentage for disabled veterans, but I'm glad they added more data in it and more dollars, but I liked it somewhat vague and just asked more, but if you want more, more specifics in it, definitely can do that. But what you have in your memo is just kind of things where things are right now. But if you wanted to take this and have more added to it for the center, I would have to do that.
I need to read this resolution.
It's up to you.
It might be good for people to hear it. This resolution, this is a resolution in support of property tax relief. And it says, whereas McDowell County is required by North Carolina statutes and the North Carolina Constitution to fund certain services and whereas the delivery of public services is dependent upon the available revenue and whereas McDowell County relies heavily on property tax revenue to fund services. And whereas McDowell County is required by current law to treat all taxpayers the same with very few exemptions and whereas the existing property tax exemptions are very limited and apply only to elderly taxpayers under a certain income and to disabled veterans. And whereas certain states treat different categories of ownership differently from taxation, such as exemption, certain portion of the primary residence from taxation. And whereas, and now therefore to be resolved that that McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby request that General Assembly improve property tax exemptions for elderly property owners and disabled veterans by allowing more income per cover and to allow for a greater exemption for disabled veterans respectfully and and further be it resolved that the McDowell County Board of Commissioners also request the General Assembly to study and implement different property tax classifications for non-primary residents adopted this eleventh day of September twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the resolution. Say with one, one caveat, too. So inflation has shot out the roof and why don't we request in the time, also look at inflation rate and try to tie that in there with it because people, people want to pay their taxes, they want to do what they're about to do, but they can't buy food. I mean, living with fixed incomes, I mean, it's tough and they need to tie, when they look at that, they need to tie it into the inflation, how they're being treated, not just here, but everywhere, with what's going on, external demand. So I would like to see that added, with some language added.
Our intent for this, so the public would know, you know, it, the way that it's set up now is on personal income, you know, within the household. And if you've got two people that are drawing social security in the household, they add those two numbers together. And that in almost all households, that will exceed what this plan is set up for, which is what?
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand. So most people, when you add, combine the incomes together, it's going to go over thirty-six thousand and that still doesn't mean that they're not suffering.
And individual, if individual is in the house by itself, the is is thirty-six thousand and seven hundred.
Yes.
So what is the benefit of being married?
Yes. So the point is that we, we get that change so that people.
Well, and two, Mr. Chairman, that, that number has not changed in what, thirty years? I mean.
It's been.
It's been a long time since that's been visited. I, I think our board, if we got to leave the charge of the state, we're going to do it. I mean, we're going to advocate for our people and we got to do this and we, and we need to let them know that we want to see action, not just, we're not sending a paper down there like that. We want to see them take action and then get this thing going in the General Assembly.
So I'm clear on the inflation comment. So where you're, you've got the income level, you wanted to move up and track the inflation and your.
Yeah. Okay. Where's going to be the best, the most advantageous to the property tax on?
Okay, sir. We have a motion to second to adopt this.
Also on the disability veterans, they need to revisit, revisit that because it actually it's a much better benefit for the elderly and not the disabled. So I don't know the specific, what off the map here, but.
Well, the.
And it needs to be, it needs to match because veterans, we need to make sure that they're in at least what the elderly is getting as well in my, in my.
Disabled veteran.
The disabled veteran.
Your disabled veterans, I'm all for that. One thing I would add is the, you know, your regular citizen, elderly citizen, that all they have, all they get is what they get from social security and that is every, so you know, I think they really need to be helped in the first place as well, being one I was, I'll agree with that. All in favor, say aye. Anybody? Moving along now to the board report. Mr. Wood.
It's informational this month, I budget a minute. You have the tax collection summary through August. As I noted last month, the bills went out in August and not July this year due to the rebound, so the collection percentage is lower than prior year, which accounts for that change. You have the budget information also through August thirty-first. And sales tax remittances through June and there's one more month to come accruing back to last fiscal year.
One question right there, Mr. Wood. So I know we are to the good on that, to about six hundred and seven thousand dollars. How does that compare to last year at the same time? Go ahead, Ed.
I'll have to look it up.
Go ahead. Just under Mars, I have just a question.
Next is the administrative items. Mr. Wood, we have action on one of those.
You do, you have EMS write-offs and you have two new early waiver requests.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve administrative items. Say. Any discussion?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
So how long these EMS write-offs, just it's good that it's ten years that they work those, what's the timeline? Is that?
They work most for ten years. And so what does that mean? We're allowed to treat as any county is, has an EMS service, an EMS bill is a tax bill. And so, you know, prior boards have authorized that and have not asked anybody to change course. And so whatever mechanism is allowed for collection of the property tax is allowed under EMS, is what that means. And so if you see a ten-year law, that means there were efforts and there was hope that there was some, some method there to collect. You see some deceased have a state, you know, they die and they're gone and there's nothing left. So, or maybe somebody got a promise or something else, so there's no recourse there. There's a couple of non-collectible information that's pretty rare. That could be somebody using a false name, false screen number, false something. Very rare, but we do what we can there. Most of it is either the ten-year law or the state's.
Excellent. Any other discussion? We have a motion second on the board. All in favor, say aye. Move to the administrative items. Oh, tax matters, Mr. Wood.
The tax matters are routine with the exception, you do have twenty-twelve write-offs from the tax collector and much like the EMS, we're only allowed by law to collect taxes and after ten years, we're not allowed by law to pursue collection of those. So they're written off completely, just off the books, through the twenty-twelve. And you see, you know, the different pages there. Those are totals per collecting districts, whether it's a fire rescue, countywide. And most of the time, that's going to be personal property or a vehicle, at least. And there may be some real property somewhere in there, but most of the time it's personal remote.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to your previous meeting.
Say. Motion second, we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Let's move to the board appointments, Matt and Burke.
This is the second reading for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. There is one vacancy to serve on the council. It is a faith-based seat. This is the second reading for the Library Board of Trustees. There are two vacancies to serve on the board, one for the Old Ford District and one for the Marion District. In addition, the library director, Marlon Brinkley, has asked for you to approve an amendment to their bylaws that will allow remote voting. The county manager will revisit this in just a moment. This is the second reading for the Transportation Advisory Board. There is one vacancy. This is the first reading for two vacancies on the Historic Preservation Commission. The members must have a demonstrated interest and background in history and must reside outside the corporate limits of the town of Old Ford and the city of Marion. And the outcome for the vote is unanimous in favor of Ms. Sylvia Martin de Campo and Ms. Kayla de Christina. One, Ms. Sylvia is for the Library Board of Trustees and Transportation Advisory was Kayla de Christina. So they're unanimous.
Thank you, Matt and Burke.
Yeah, I'll mention the bylaw request. Mr. Brinkley did reach out to me about that and filled a couple of questions. Do you, I think it's a, it's a request based on convenience and several of his board members work scheduling times that they can get together. It has been challenging apparently. So he's asking for the bylaw change to allow remote voting, electronic voting, but if.
I make a motion we don't have.
Say. They only need four times a year.
Yes, sir.
And they got a full board now, right?
There's one vacancy.
How many people's on that board?
Uh, nine. So it takes five to have a board.
Any discussion? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Moving on to citizen comments, can we have anyone sign that?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next would be the Commissioner's staff reports.
Couple things to mention. You have been invited for the October meeting to return to the Carson House. That would be the October ninth, would be that evening. They do ask always, every year that we move, that'd be the four o'clock for that evening. So that would be a separate change in time and location for that meeting.
Yeah, I think we need to do that. I think we could do that. Make a motion.
Make a motion, we move our term meeting to the Carson House and begin one hour earlier, four o'clock.
I was going to say.
So next week, thank you. Next week, you're scheduled to have your meeting, the Sigma and other relevant items. There was a discussion about having that meeting in DSS. Again, it may be a temporary change, maybe not, but to have a vote, I think would help.
Make a motion we move our.
Let me add to, I did, and I'm, we won't actually agree with this, I requested that all of the departments meet there.
Make a motion we meet with Bonby and DSS next week at that location on East Corso in the office room.
All in favor, say aye. But, okay, we have a closed session. Say, make a motion we do a closed session. Say, first round match. All in favor, say aye. Okay. We are in closed session. We do, we have to get ready. Move, we come out of closed session, say. Motion second, discuss, all in favor, say aye. We are. Move your way, Chair, just a minute. Say. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.